This conference will now be recorded.
July 20th at 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Maskey.
Here.
Fuentes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
In present, zero absent.
His term there, Alvarado says he's going to take control and write this bill. There were major disagreements about extending an extra $300 of unemployment benefits set to expire at the end of the month. Also, there were worries about.
We're gonna find that. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fagerly. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Osmus, second.
motion by Fagerly, second by Osmus to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman. Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion passes. And next, we have the consent items, but I would like to make a couple of comments before we go to the consent items. I have been getting a lot of phone calls on people wanting us to consider wearing, making masks mandatory, as other cities have had. I was one of the first mayors in the state of Minnesota to come out and say that, recommend that masks should be worn. I believe the date was March 13th, if I remember correctly. And since then, I have on numerous occasions said that wearing masks are beneficial to our communities, beneficial to all people. You don't wear a mask to protect yourself, you wear a mask to protect others. And I said in that same meeting, in that same presentation that I made, I said that N95 masks, or the medical grade masks, should be kept for the healthcare providers and those needing those services. So I'll again repeat that, that I really feel strongly that people need to wear masks when they're outside of their family group. Now, if you are together with your brothers and sisters, and moms and dads, and aunts and uncles on a regular basis, that's not quite as important, but if you're with the general public, it's very important. The statistics prove that if masks were worn by all people, that the coronavirus life expectancy would decrease dramatically. Both my wife and other family members work in healthcare, and so I have some pretty good inside information as far as the COVID precautions that need to be taken. So again, if you notice, Minnesota was above six percentage points today, this week, starting the week off. And anything above five points is considered to the point where things should possibly be shut down again. So I urge our citizens to wear masks when they're outside of their family group, and to do so for others, not necessarily for yourself, but for others. The other comment I want to make is last meeting, I did not have Judy read through the consent items. This was a practice that I started as the mayor, and it was not done prior to me being the mayor. It was an oversight on my part, and I did not intentionally leave that out. But I just wanted to remind the council that we have gone back to the way things used to be on a number of things. It was not my intent to do the same thing on reading the consent items. So this evening, we will again read the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
Okay, on the consent agenda for this evening, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of July 6th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes, July 13th, the accounts payable report for July 2nd through July 15th, for council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lakes Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board minutes of May 19th, and for council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board minutes of June 10th.
Then you're getting a motion to approve.
So moved, Fuentes.
Osmus, second.
Motion by Fuentes, second by Osmus. Discussion. Roll.
Councilmember Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have Public Works Public Safety Report. Councilmember Plowman.
Public Works Public Safety met Wednesday, July 8th. We met via electronic means, as we typically do. All members, including myself, were present. That was council member, myself, council member Osmus, council member Alvarado, and council member Nelson. Others present were our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Fire Chief, Chief Hanson, our Police Chief, Chief Felton, Ms. Kelsey Del Bosque, our Engineering Administrative Assistant, and the West Central Tribune was represented as well. We called the meeting to order about 5:15, and the first item we discussed were police and fire statistics. They are included in your packets. I know that just a simple conversation took place regarding police calls and whatnot, and about how, as expected, and unfortunately, as has been the trend, you know, with the COVID crisis going on in terms of certain types of calls, including domestic calls, different disturbance type calls related to that, abandoned vehicles being up as well. There was a few other items. But I assume that both chiefs are on the line with us tonight, so now would be the time for anybody to ask specific questions regarding those statistics, and I'll give you all just a second and look for hands. Seeing and hearing none, I guess we will move on to our first item of the evening. That item was regarding the approval of a Robins Island beach safety procedure. This is brought to us by Park and Rec, and a little bit of background regarding the closure policy. There never was a formal policy made for closing the beach, however, in the past, a community ed and rec staff would receive notification from the wastewater staff, who had tested the water when the fecal count was over 200. This was the threshold that previous staff put into place, closing the beach down, and it was based off of a recommendation from the EPA about when to close public beaches. Some of the reasons for high test results often came from heavy rainfall, high temps, as well as we all are aware of the goose problem in the area. Wastewater does test every Monday, except for holidays, and on holidays, they test on Tuesdays. They send test results to the Park and Rec Director within 24 hours. If that count is over 200, the Park and Rec Director notifies our city administrator, our Public Works Director, our public staff, and the IT Department regarding a beach closure. Staff puts out signage and posts the message on the various websites and social media. Wastewater then retests the water and sends the results in day after day until we have that number underneath the threshold of 200. First staff recommendation for this motion was to continue testing water, but remove the current signage that goes onto the beach, that goes onto the beach and then comes off when the threshold is met or exceeded. The new procedure would implement a flag procedure, and that meaning, a green flag will be flown at all times when the water is under that threshold, equalling safety to swim and be in the water. A red flag would then be flown when the threshold is exceeded, and it is not recommended to use the beach. Now, I don't believe that that red flag means that the beach is technically closed per law, so to speak, but it would be a recommendation by the city when that flag is being flown. And there will also be signage that will iterate specifically what it means, what the different flags mean, and other types of safety information that goes along with that. Information can also be posted on the city website and social media, advising the community of the status of the water conditions. And as mentioned, the signage will be placed at the beach all the time, explaining the details of water testing, water safety information, and the meaning of the red and green flags. We had some discussion regarding the system, and we, the body did believe that the simplicity of the red flag, green flag, was a nice move, and also having some permanent signage for the public to read and be aware of what was going on was also a good way to do things. So a motion was made and seconded, approving the Robins Island Beach Safety Procedure as presented by staff, and I will present that as a motion now.
Alvarado, second. Motion made and seconded. But made by Plowman, seconded by Alvarado. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, our next action item would be regarding the adoption of a resolution awarding a Robins Island Parking and Water Main Improvements Project. A little bit of background, the city of Wilmer passed a half cent local option sales tax in the fall of 2018. A Robins Island Subcommittee was developed and a plan was created to redo the roads, parking lots, and water main at Robins Island. Bolden Mink has been hired to oversee the design of the total project and open bids on the parking lot and water main improvements on June 23rd. Three bids were received. Crow River Construction, in the amount of $1,567,534. Riley Brothers Construction, in the amount of $1,295,061. And Dunick Inc., in the amount of $1,179,553.45. After review, Bolden Mink is recommending the award of the contract to Dunick Inc. The Invest in Wilmer Committee has also been presented the information on the bids and seeking the recommendation of the project award. We had a few different options, but we also noticed that we had an estimated construction cost, and this was something that we debated a little bit, but our estimate for construction initially was about $1.9 million. And so this low bid coming in at almost, just under 1.2 million, was a substantial amount under the original estimated amount. So after further discussion, a motion was made and seconded, adopting a resolution awarding the Robins Island Parking and Water Main Improvements Project to Dunick Inc. in the amount of $1,179,553.45. And I will enter that motion now.
Second, Alvarado. Councilmember Plowman, seconded by Alvarado. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
And?
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our final item of the evening was simply a discussion or an informational item that there will be more discussion on in the future. Staff brought forth for information the discussion of the future of the Gurry Shelter at Robins Island. The shelter has been moved at least three times, according to records, the last time being from 19th Ave, Southwest, to its current location in 93 for a cost of $3,500. When the move took place, the shelter was valued at right around $10,000. The city, along with donations by the Legion, then spent $1,500 on a new foundation, $1,000 for sewer and water utilities installation, and $3,000 on an interior remodel. Currently, the windows and patio door need to be replaced, and the siding and shingles have less than about 10-year lifespan left. After discussion, we discussed what the future of the shelter might be, especially with considerations for the new Four Seasons building that has been placed out there, which is beautiful, by the way. We're very, very happy with the way that that turned out. Nice project, but we, the committee, thought it best to send that item back to the Robins Island Subcommittee for discussing those options, and then allowing that item to then work its way back up through the appropriate procedure and protocol. And so we expect that item to be coming in the future. So that was our last item for that evening for discussion. Future meetings will be coming up. We anticipate more discussion about that in the future. There was no further business, and we adjourned at 6:23, and I would move to file the minutes.
Osmus, so moved.
Motion made by Plowman, and Osmus, you want to second, correct?
That's what I'll do. I'll second it.
Seconded by Osmus. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Yes.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is Finance. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Finance Committee met on July 9th at 5:00 PM via teleconference. Those in attendance were myself, Councilmember Fagerly, Councilmember Plowman, Councilmember Osmus. Others on the teleconference were Councilmember Vicky Davis, Finance Director Okens, Park and Rec Director Baumgart, Barn Theater Representative Gary Geiger, Glacial Curling, Glacial Ridge Curling Facility Chair Tom Amber, EDC Executive Director Aaron Backman, and EDC Assistant Connie Schmal, and the West Central Tribune reporter, Shelby Lynn Roon. After the meeting was called to order, we did have a motion to move the items number three and four from discussion to action items, and they were the Barn Theater Loan Forgiveness and the Curling Club Request. The action item that we had to bring forward tonight is the Barn Theater Loan Forgiveness, which is a resolution. Staff reviewed information from the committee regarding the barn theater loans obtained through the Small Cities Development Program on June 12th, 2014. Barn Theater Representative Gary Geiger explained that one feature of the loan is that after seven years, which would be July 21st, 2021, the loan would be forgiven if the theater still owned the property. The balance of that loan is $29,462. The theater is requesting early forgiveness of that loan to enable the barn to sell the third floor of their building. Selling off this part of the building would enable them to get through the economic crisis caused by the COVID pandemic. In order for that to happen, the loan would need to be forgiven about 11 months early. The two other loans that they have have a remaining balance of $1,606,882, and could be paid off with the cash flow provided by the sale and the early forgiveness of the first loan. The city attorney has researched the required process for this to occur, and has determined that the city of Wilmer would need to adopt a resolution recommending to the Wilmer HRA that early forgiveness of the loan in question be provided to the barn theater. It was moved and seconded and passed to recommend a resolution to provide early forgiveness of the Small Cities Development Program loan to the Wilmer Community Theater by the Wilmer Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I will enter that motion now.
Osmus, I will second that.
Motion made by Nelson, seconded by Osmus. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Hi.
Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our next item was the Curling Club Request, and we did pass two resolutions at the Finance Committee. The first one was to extend the agreement by two years, and the second one was to authorize Architect Negan and Associates Agreement. After the meeting, it was brought to our attention, and that documentation is in the City Council Action Request Form in the packet tonight, that it was not necessary for us to do these items at this time, that those had been approved by the city, the extension, and then Architect Agreement had been approved by a resolution back on August 19th, 2019. So the minutes reflect the action of the Finance Committee meeting, but the request was that we do not need to take action on that item tonight. Are there any questions on that? Hearing none, I will move on to the discussion items that we had. The 2020 Bond Pricing Committee Rate. Finance Director Okens explained that the bond pricing committee has met with Bremer Bank, which is the lead lending institution for the financing of 2020 Improvement Bond. Criteria set by the council established the financing amount not to exceed $1,965,000, interest costs not to exceed 3%, and maturity not to exceed 2031. Final determinations for the financing include participation of Bremer Bank at $984,000, Lake Region Bank, Kensington Bank, and Home State Bank, each for $327,000, for a total of $1,965,000. Maturity date is February 1st, 2031, and the final interest rate agreed upon was 1.75%. It was noted that this will lower the anticipated interest rate on assessments to property owners from 4% to 3.75%. In regard to the sales tax project financing, staff is exploring the possibility of initially utilizing a construction loan with final financing to occur for Robins Island and Swanson Field later, with final financing to occur later for Robins Island and Swanson Field projects. These matters were in our information only. Our next item was the Corona's Relief Fund Certification Form Application. Finance Director Okens reported that the mayor has submitted the Relief Fund Certification Form as required, and explained that council action was not needed for this submission. It was noted that specific criteria need to be followed by the city to qualify for reimbursement. These criteria include expenditures that are necessary due to public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved, that would be as of March 27th, 2020, and were or will be incurred or expended during the period which begins March 1st, 2020, and ends on December 1st, 2020. To date, the city hasn't incurred expenditures of approximately $25,000 for sanitation supplies and for computer equipment for employees working remotely. The Finance Department is working with the Human Resources Department regarding the emergency paid sick leave, which allows up to 80 hours per employee to be used as a result of self-quarantining due to the coronavirus. To date, 40 of the 108 full-time employees have incurred this cost. The Minnesota Department of Revenue has allocated CARES funds totaling a little over $1.5 million to the city of Wilmer. EDC Executive Director Aaron Backman reported to us that the county's allocation is $5,236,000. He also reported that County Administrator Larry Kleindl is looking at establishing five to six teams of people to discuss the needs and usage of these county funds. Those teams included an HSHS team, a public safety team, a business and nonprofit team, and a COVID expense team, and an employee team. It was noted that the EDC would be part of the business and nonprofit team. The EDC also shared with us that Mr. Kleindl is recommending that 20% of the county's funds be funneled through the EDC, especially its Finance Committee for reviewing, for review of dispersing emergency loans. This matter and information was for information only. The next item we discussed was the State Finance Information Update, and Finance Director Okens reported that no formal information has been received from the state to date. However, he indicated that there was preliminary indication the state funding may not be affected until 2021. Future agendas, Councilmember Davis had submitted a request for future discussion on filing fees and costs involved for special elections, an updated sales status report, final budgets for the 2020 street projects, and the June 30th, 2020 financial report will be presented at the next Finance Committee meeting. Two other items, sales tax, project financing, and possible CARES Health debt refinancing will be discussed at a future Finance Committee meeting also. There was no other business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:47. And I will enter a motion to approve the minutes now.
Osmus, Nelson.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Osmus. File the minutes. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Maskey.
Hi.
Fuentes.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Alvarado.
Hi.
Osmus.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next, we have City Council Member announcements, and we'll start with Councilmember Alvarado.
First of all, I think I've been observing around town the fact that I think people are getting the message to mow, to mow in. I still see signs of mowing out, which is incorrect, obviously, but I think it's getting better, so I'm encouraged by that. I'd like to hear more from the citizenry of Wilmer about the mask issue. I personally believe, like the mayor, that it's an important thing that we do for our citizens. I think it's a way to help business. If we're protecting each other and we're still allowed to go to business because we're masked up, that's a good thing. I don't think anybody wants to see a forced shutdown like we had earlier in the pandemic. So I think it's a pro-business move by wearing the mask, a pro-family move, especially to those that have older adults in their families. I think it's a very student-prudent way to go. I want to remind people that we do have a food shelf in Wilmer, if you need it, in their second harvest. If you need it, please take advantage of it. I know that they are more than willing to provide food for you. So just know that it's out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that some of the recreation activities. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that some of the recreation activities that we have in the community are definitely being used. I was out at Robins Island the other night, and I, if there's any citizens that don't go out there very often, I think they would be amazed at how many people play disc golf out there and the equipment that they have, that they haul around the course. It's just, a lot of cars out there, it gets a lot of use as well as the park. And the pickleball courts are going strong, and the splash pad is getting a lot of use with these ninety-degree days we've been having. So I'm glad we were able to offer some of those, and I'm glad they're getting used.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll double down on that comment. It's great to see people utilizing the amenities that we have in Wilmer and being outside and enjoying the outdoors and enjoying the heat, because half of the year, or more than half the year, we're sitting here snowed in, in the dark. So it's great that we can offer those to our citizens and their own families to be able to take advantage of. Nothing huge tonight, just we are talking about, in Public Works, some discussions regarding local option sales tax projects. We've heard those going around in the discussion regarding the Swanson Field subject. We are looking at talking about that yet this month so that we can begin moving on that if and when necessary, but we want to do that in a timely manner. So just want the council to be ready for that to be coming as soon as very early August. Also, there will be an update coming very shortly regarding the ADA Transition Plan within Public Works, and I've heard of social media posts and other posts within city media that may be coming here this week regarding that ADA Transition Plan. So also be expecting to see that. That's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. I just wanted to say thank you for your comments tonight regarding the masks. I hope that our community is open to recognizing that wearing masks perhaps could help us to open up faster and not shut us down. And so I appreciated your comments tonight and hope that our community will embrace the safety that comes with wearing masks. So thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I'm good, thanks.
Councilmember Maskey.
Pass.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you. I'll pass.
Councilmember Davis.
Well, what I'm going to say is for my fellow council members, we had our discussion with Pamela Whitmore on June twenty-ninth, and it seems that we're only partway done with that conversation. And so I was talking to her. She said that it would be good for us to meet another time and discuss the things that we went over, such as what did we learn? She sent us all a summary, so we could discuss that. Also, is there a policy we discussed that would help with conversation? Do we need a formal policy or an agreed-upon practice on how to get information from staff or department heads so that all of us council members are getting the same information? And does there need to be clarification of chain of command for communication from council to staff? So these are some things that we could maybe talk about, and there's a fifth Monday in August, so maybe that would work. What do you all think? All right.
Well, I saw four thumbs up, so that means, are you going to work with Brian and getting that put together?
I guess. Pamela said she would help us, so. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Finance Committee meeting date.
We do have a meeting this Thursday, July twenty-third at five PM. The agenda went out today, I believe.
Public Works Public Safety.
Public Works Public Safety will meet this week as well, the twenty-second. It's officially five o'clock. I'm guessing we'll get started closer to five-ten. Thank you.
Labor.
There will be no meeting next Monday.
Meeting tomorrow.
We do have a meeting Monday, and we'll be online again, Monday, the twenty-seventh.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Fagerly. Osmus, second.
Motion by Fagerly, second by Osmus. Word adjourned.